This meeting of Norwood City Council is hereby called to order. Please rise for the prayer and the pledge of allegiance.
Our Father, who art in heaven, is a body we congregate in these council chambers. We pray for thy divine guidance that we may do all things well according to thy holy will. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes.
Mr. Mumford.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We'll move on to minutes of the previous meetings. We have minutes from August 23rd which were disseminated by email. Mrs. Hanahan.
I would like to get something clarified here. Under Mrs. Hanahan requested the clerk of council send a letter requesting written policies and procedures for the planning commission and rezoning of their fields.
Can I ask you where in the amendments are?
It's on the very last page.
New Business?
Yes.
New Business, thank you. Okay, Mrs. Hanahan.
Can I just point out records that what I asked for was specifically policies and procedures that affect the timing of items being added to the planning commission meeting agendas? Because there has been some confusion about that.
Would you like to make a motion to amend the minutes before we adopt them?
Yes.
To include that?
Yes.
Is there a second to that? Seconded by Mr. Mumford. So the motion on the floor is to amend the minutes. To amend the minutes under New Business, the, under Mrs. Hanahan requested the clerk of council send a letter requesting written policies and procedures for the planning commission that were specifically, that would affect the timing of submission to the planning commission?
Yes.
Is there any, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes.
Mr. Mumford.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Now we need a motion to adopt the minutes as amended. Mr. Blair?
I motion, let you know this.
Seconded by Mrs. Hanahan. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes.
Mr. Mumford.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We'll now move on to the presentation of the resolution. Angie Holt is here with us. Could you please come up to the microphone and we'd like to, I'd like to ask the clerk of council, even though we've passed the resolution, I would like for it to be read so that you can hear it.
Okay.
And then we'll present this to you.
Thank you.
Resolution honoring Max Holt for his bringing honor to the city of Norwood through his contributions to the 2016 bronze medal winning United States men's Olympic volleyball team. Whereas Max Holt grew up here in the great city of Norwood, graduating from Nativity School and Purcell Marion High School, and whereas Max Holt began playing competitive volleyball while in high school, which led him to Penn State University where he led his team to the 2008 NCAA Division One Championship as a junior, and whereas Max Holt has continued growing as a player and demonstrated the strength of his character when he responded to the disappointment of not making the 2012 U.S. Olympic team with renewed determination and hard work, and whereas Max Holt has shown the same determination on the 2016 United States men's Olympic volleyball team, helping his team to keep fighting after nearly being eliminated in the early rounds and to win a come-from-behind win over Russia in the bronze medal game after a heartbreaking loss to Italy, and whereas Max Holt continues to be a positive example of the spirit of Norwoodians, and whereas council, the administration, all employees of the city of Norwood, and the citizens of Norwood wish to express their support and admiration for Max Holt and the U.S. men's Olympic volleyball team. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Norwood, state of Ohio, that this resolution symbolizes the respect, admiration, and support that the members of council, the administration, all employees of the city of Norwood, and the citizens of Norwood have for Max Holt who continues to make us proud in the eyes of the world.
Thank you so much, and I wish Max were here to accept it by himself, but he really understands and appreciates the support that he receives from home. He felt every one of you cheering for him and clapping for him while he was there, and he, from the bottom of his heart, understands how much, how important his fan support and his, his family and home support is. So, thank you very much, and he will be so proud to hang this on his wall, so.
All right. The next really nice thing we get to do on the agenda is the presentation of the check by DynaGee. We have Sidney Faxen Trout here. Thankfully, the air conditioning went off. We might be able to hear now. And Chief Kramer?
For those of you who don't know, I was approached shortly after the council meeting where we were confronted with how we were going to pay for the expired police vest, and I was approached by this company. I did absolutely nothing to get this check from them, but they were very kind to contact me, and I had to kind of keep it under my hat, but I wanted to make sure that this, that everyone in this city knew that DynaGee and the Energy Alliances group that we've been working with were the ones who stepped forward and provided the city funding for the vests, and so I'm going to turn it over to Chief Kramer and to Sidney.
I was going to say, Madam President, will you join us down here? Because you did all the work.
I didn't do the work, seriously.
It's sincerely appreciated what you did. I will say, this is sincerely appreciated from the police department. I can tell you, all the members of the police department are eternally grateful for what you did for us in allowing us to get these vests up. So I have for each one of you, just two of you here?
We've got a whole. Three or four coming up.
Do they want to come up?
Come on up. If I have to come up, you have to come up.
That's what the deal was.
No, that was the deal.
So, for each one of you, I have one of our challenge coins, and on this challenge coin is our badge and a city seal, and it also has our core values, which is commitment integrity, pride, professionalism, and respect, and that you've definitely shown those core values and doing this very kind deed for us. So, I can give you one of these. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And there's one more back there, too.
I'll give you any one of those.
It's the little guy back there.
The little guy in the blue.
I think Sidney has some points.
Thank you very much. I'm sure my little ones will really appreciate that. Good evening. I am Sidney Faxen Trout, owner of Energy Alliances, and early in 2008, my late father, Spence Faxen, stepped into this council's chamber and asked that Norwood City Council place a ballot issue in the November election for a gas aggregation program. That following November, the residents of Norwood passed the issue, and Energy Alliances was chosen as the partner to help manage the program. And my father never thought of this as just another job, but a relationship where the community's best interests came first. And our program is designed to help residents stabilize energy costs, and, you know, eight years later, we have consistently achieved that goal, and that's even during the most volatile times such as the polar vortex of 2014. Residents have enjoyed savings on their gas costs here in Norwood year after year. And Energy Alliances' relationship with the city of Norwood has only become stronger during the past eight years. We're proud to sponsor events year in and year out, particularly the fireworks. I think, you know, we're pretty interested in that, and this donation tonight to you, your force is just another extension of our strong partnership with the city. So accompanying me tonight is Rich Sarace of DynaGee Energy Services, and at this time, on behalf of DynaGee Energy Services and Energy Alliances Incorporated, we would like to present to the Norwood Police Association this huge check for $15,000.
Chief, did you want to say a few words? Or you, you wrote me.
What's that?
Did you want to say a few additional words?
You know, I don't know, there's really a whole lot more I can add, other than that I can, you know, I'll reiterate again that the officers are very grateful. They feel much, obviously much safer having the equipment they need, and it's truly appreciated. We really can't thank you enough.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Don't take that to the bank.
Oh, thank you.
And don't forget, Mr. Dieter's on the way out.
The little guy over there. The underfed.
Again, on behalf of the Norwood community, thank you very much. We very, very much appreciate it. Nice to start off meetings with some positive things.
All right. We have no addressed, no request to address council on agenda items. We do have other things that will be on the agenda. No standing committees. We'll just move on to introductory readings of resolutions. That is, a resolution authorizing the mayor or safety service director to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs and to execute contracts as required and declaring an emergency. Mr. Mumford.
I move we suspend the rules. I have all three readings of the resolution.
Seconded by Mr. Sankar. Is there any discussion? Mr. Sankar.
Yes, Madam President. This resolution, what it does, it allows us to fill out an application to be part of a state program where we are applying for potential funds to do some streets within the city of Norwood. This capital improvement would be a grant that would come from the state of Ohio, but in order to get to that point, we have to have the approval to, you know, fill out the application from council's approval so that we can submit it to them, the state for consideration for some streets within the city. I believe that streets that potentially would qualify need to be in a certain economical, geographical area that fits an economic profile for that neighborhood, so it's, it's not that you can use it on Montgomery Road or, you know, oh, I don't know Cathedral Streets such as that. But, but anyway, but this allows us to get the support of council to fill out the application to submit it for the state for potential funding. Doesn't guarantee we're going to receive any funds from the state, however, if, without the application going in, we, you know, wouldn't even be eligible, so. I don't know if the mayor wanted to comment on this.
Mr. Mayor?
Great job, Joe. No, it's about the same thing, you know, like you said, with community block grant funds, it's limited, so a lot of time when Mr. Gears and the engineering company puts together as a package, that basically what we try to do is get the money and get a fund where it don't cost us anything. And so, you know, the one thing that we found out, that Joe and I thought was very interesting is, the areas that we have that are eligible for the block grant fund is shrinking. In other words, everybody has good news about Norwood except the people who live here, but our economic situations are improving, and so the areas that we have eligible based on income are being reduced, and that's because, you know, it's, it's starting to turn around, so. And that's the way we've done most of our projects. The idea is, is to use funds available, because as you know, there's no money in the general fund, so Mr. Gears works with our engineering company and puts the package together for low interest loans or whatever over the years, and I can assure you, look around, I'm sure Mr. Gears will give you a list of everything that's been accomplished and built with these funds over the past years that, that I guess, you know, some people take for granted, but there's a couple of areas that we're looking at next year that'll be really, there are areas that really need it, so hopefully we get the funding, we'll pull it off.
Mr. Mumford?
Yes, I just want to mention that this year, one of the streets we're doing because of this, this funding is Hunter Avenue from Worth Avenue to the park. There's another street, but since it's not in my ward, I don't remember what street it is. Maybe Williams. Williams. Williams Avenue. But that's, it's very much appreciated, and the residents are excited about it.
And I know in the past, if there were matching funds, occasionally, we could use the community development block grant funds.
Yes.
As matching funds, so while those funds may not be a lot for streets, when you factor them in that you can use them for matching funds, they really do more than the $200,000 or $300,000 that we get, because we use those for matching funds for grants, so. And we've experienced in the tree board, a shrinking area, a population of where we're permitted to do streetscapes and tree plantings as well.
The motion on the floor is to suspend the rules. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes.
Mr. Mumford.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have all three readings.
Resolution authorizing the mayor or safety service director to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs and to execute contracts as required and declaring an emergency. A resolution authorizing the mayor or safety service director to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs and to execute contracts as required and declaring an emergency. A resolution authorizing the mayor or safety service director to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs and to execute contracts as required and declare an emergency.
Mr. Mumford?
I move the resolution be passed.
Seconded by Mrs. Stickley. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes.
Mr. Mumford.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We have no administration report, so we will move on to other requests to address council. And I'll do these in the order in which I receive them. The first is Lynn Ellis, talking about the 100-year flood. And Mrs. Ellis, you'll have five minutes if you'll give us your name and address, and you'll have five minutes to address council.
My name is Lynn Ellis. I live at 4630 Bakery Avenue. I'm coming before you tonight to express my pride for my hometown. As you all know too well, on August 28th, Norwood was slammed with a horrible flash flood. It's what happened after that flood that fills me with pride. The police, fire, public works, 911, they were there for us in a big way. They rescued many, many people that night. They all woke up the next day and volunteered to help clean out basements, pump out water, help the elderly, and do whatever they could to help with comfort and cleanup. I thank you. I appreciate your service. I've always loved Mr. Fred Rogers. Yes, Mr. Rogers. And thought, growing up here in Norwood, we had a beautiful day in our neighborhood and a caring place to live. One of my favorite quotes from him says, "When I was a boy and I would see scary things in the news, my mother would say to me, 'Look for the helpers. You will always find people who are helping.'" And that's what happened in our city. Neighbors rushed to help others. My mother's house was flooded, and I had no end of offers to help me clean up. I saw neighbors helping each other, and I helped them where I could. I was even voluntold, which means volunteered and told to do so, several times by Marilyn Hanahan and loved helping her. That's what we do in Norwood. To all the nameless heroes that rush to help others, I thank you. Norwood citizens did what we do best. We pull together as a city. It's what we've always done. I believe that this is what people that are not from here and live outside of here do not understand about us. We're a tight-knit city. They poke fun at us in crisis. They complain about what they think we should be or shouldn't be, and yet we still come out on top. They're jealous, and they wish they were us. I couldn't be more happier about my, and more proud of my hometown. When the things, when the going gets tough, the people of Norwood get going. No one asks for thanks or praise, but they certainly deserve it. Once again, I thank all of those who helped. This is why Norwood will forever be the gem of the Highlands. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis. Next is Linda Sue Allison. And Ms. Allison, if you'll give us your name and address, and you'll have five minutes to address council.
My name is Linda Sue Allison. I am co-owner of 1930 Elm Avenue, which was again also included in the flood prone area. This is almost exactly 15 years. I'm standing in the same spot, asking some people that I talked to then to please help the area of Elm Avenue and Maple Avenue to get some kind of drainage system in to where we no longer have to go through the 100-year flood, because in 2001, we lost everything. Our, our wall fell. A man had a broken arm and a broken leg in the apartment building on Maple Avenue from the same exact situation that just happened on the 29th of July, or I mean August. This is unreasonable. 15 years later, we're going through the same exact thing in that area. I was told back then that a grant was to go through, but the grant never went through because what happened was, it was put off till too late, and the, we lost the grant to be able to fix the problem. Can you please do something before someone ends up dying in the Maple Avenue, Elm Avenue area? It's either work with MSD, get some kind of funding. I'll do whatever you want me to do to get this taken care of. This is over a 50-year problem in that area. The drainage system is, has not been replaced in at least 50 years. The storm sewers, the state of Ohio made it to where we had to send of all of our storm sewer water to the street. Now, all that goes to the street, plus adds into the sewer systems, which backs it up because the pipes are not big enough to hold the drain water. It backs up into the streets, which brings sewage out onto our front yards, backyards. Elderly people, a gentleman that had had a, a heart attack not, no longer than three months ago, had to be carried out on his daughter's back because his floodwater was up into the first level of his home. He could have easily drowned. There's no excuse for it being this way. And I, like I said, I will do anything to help the city to get this taken care of before somebody dies. So if anyone has any suggestions, if you need me to do anything, please call me. I'll be glad to do something. I'm currently unemployed, so I would be glad to help. I've got the time.
Thank you very much. And next we have Pastor Sunny James. Again, you'll, if you'll give us your name and address, and you'll have five minutes to address council.
Thank you, Madam President. Pastor Sunny James, 1830 Hopkins Avenue, here in Norwood, Ohio. Like many others have expressed, the first thing I want to do is to give honor to whom honor is due. And I'm so proud that so many residents, unsung heroes, stepped up to the plate when the flood hit. I personally was driving in that flood, and to see the looks on the faces of individuals that had no idea that it was going to be that catastrophic, and to pull up by PNC Bank and to see our officers out there in the middle of it. And as I pulled up and commended them and also wanted to make sure they were safe, I just want the residents of Norwood to know that we are a resilient community, and that flood and what happened only proved that. When there's an issue, big or small, we do have the desire in the heart to come together as one. And as I've stood before many of you on many occasions, a lot of people misunderstand some of the things that I say or think I said something that I didn't say, but I also believe you can get it right from the person's mouth. Yes, there are times that challenges are required, but there are also times that challenges are present before us, and I'm very proud of how many of the city council, current city council members came and provided their own individual agendas to help those families in need, and I applaud that, and I give you my heart to say, job well done. Now that we are still working through those tough issues, and many families have still not 100% been restored, I believe that if we continue this journey of working together, I believe that this community, as great as it is, as great as it once was perceived to be, I believe that there's still some potholes that we can fill together, and as I've stated on many, many occasions, if we join together, I don't believe that it always takes a 911 crisis. I believe it takes cutting through red tape, cutting through personal agendas, cutting through personal feelings, and just looking at the issues at hand. And one of those issues, as I leave you today, are our youth. Many of us say, well, yes, we are in a financial crutch. I have stood before you on many of occasions and told you all that I have plenty of proven facts and success stories that can help our city. I saw today how a fine company came up and gave our police department $15,000. Folks, I believe in grassroots efforts. I have over 30 years of experience hands-on in helping to turn things around for municipalities. We have experts and professionals that do these type of things for a living, waiting, standing by, absolutely free, to help us. I was just at our recreation department today and had a wonderful conversation with our director there. And you see, we come up with these great fundraising ideas, but a fundraiser that produces $9 when we need thousands of dollars, that's not a fundraiser, although it's nice, that's not going to answer the problems. I want to encourage all of our city residents, our city leadership, send me out an email, call me. This coming Sunday from 1 to 3, we're going to be hosting, thanks to the new program in Norwood called Elevations, hosting a boxing class. I believe that this community, as great as it is, as great as it once was perceived to be, I believe that there are still some potholes that we can fill together. And as I've stated on many, many occasions, if we join together, I don't believe that it always takes a 911 crisis. I believe it takes cutting through red tape, cutting through personal agendas, cutting through personal feelings, and just looking at the issues at hand. And one of those issues, as I leave you today, are our youth. Many of us say, "Well, yes, we are in a financial crutch." I have stood before you on many of occasions and told you all that I have plenty of proven facts and success stories that can help our city. I saw today how a fine company came up and gave our police department $15,000. Folks, I believe in grassroots efforts. I have over 30 years of experience, hands-on, in helping to turn things around for municipalities. We have experts and professionals that do these type of things for a living, waiting, standing by, absolutely free, to help us. I was just at our recreation department today and had a wonderful conversation with our director there. And you see, we come up with these great fundraising ideas, but a fundraiser that produces $9 when we need thousands of dollars, that's not a fundraiser, although it's nice, that's not going to answer the problems. I want to encourage all of our city residents, our city leadership, send me out an email, call me. This coming Sunday, from 1:00 to 3:00, we're going to be hosting, thanks to the new program in Norwood called Elevations, hosting a boxing class from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. at the Richard E. Lender YMCA. I'm going to encourage each of you to just come by and see what's happening. Saturday before last, on one-day notice, we had over 61 people coming by the park to show their expressed interest and desire to have some of these strategies that we've been talking to you all about come forth. And so, as we roll these programs out, I'm really encouraging you, let's not have a tsunami, let's not have a storm, let's not have a fight. Let's come together and really work with those that have done these kinds of things to bring about a financial answer to many of our troubled areas. And my heart does go out to those families that are still struggling because they haven't quite rebounded. But if we work together, there's funding, there's finances that will be handed to the city. And as I close here, we are offering to hand the city equal portion of the funds, just because it's the right thing to do. Now, I don't know how many times somebody else can come up and offer money, and we accept it. But for whatever reason, the proposals that I'm bringing to the table, I'm not even getting a phone call from the planning chair or the committees. I'm not even having my emails returned or inquires. All I'm asking for, come to the table, and let me show you how it's more than just these other companies that are willing to bring funding and financing to the table. So thank you for being so resilient, Norwood. Thank you for coming and answering the cry, for hurting people. And that's what all of our lives should be about, fighting for those who can't fight for themselves. This Sunday, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m., with all of our other events we've done, you've seen the huge success, so we don't have to prove ourselves. It's the puddings, the writings in the pudding, or whatever that saying is. God bless Norwood. God bless each of you, and let's make this community thrive. We have some answers. All you've got to do is call 513-487-8843, or email me, pastorsonyjames@gmail.com. That's S-O-N-N-Y. And let's every city council meeting have checks being presented so that we can bring the programs that will help strengthen our city. God bless each and every one of you, and again, thank you for your heart to help the people that need help the most. God bless you.
Thank you, Pastor James. We'll move on to unfinished business. Excuse me, is there any unfinished business? Move on to new business. As we start, I'd like to let you know that I did get notification from the Hamilton County Board of Elections that we will have two issues on the ballot from the city of Norwood. Issue five is the electric aggregation resolution and all of the paperwork that needed to be filed. So the citizens will be given an opportunity to vote on electric aggregation. And issue six is our eight-mil levy renewal. Again, it's just a levy renewal. And I did get a letter indicating that the ballot proofs will be available for inspection and correction during business hours from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on Friday, September 16th, and that they'll be on the website from 4:00 Thursday until 4:00 on Friday, that if we need to make changes, that we can do that. And I'm asking, if I could, I'd like to pass this to our law group, and have you review those for us prior to the issues going on the ballot, make sure the wording is clear. Thank you. Any other new business? Mrs. Hanahan.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to announce that Hamilton County will be holding a public information session to discuss ongoing activity and processes underway to assist residents with cleanup and restoration efforts. Resource information will be available to help guide residents in proper maneuvers. MSD will get representatives, representatives in attendance to talk about its sewer backup program. And as you know, this was a catastrophic event. Hamilton County Emergency Medical Agency, EMA, is actively involved in coordinating efforts to gain assistance from state and/or federal resources in addition to what can be provided locally. The meeting will be taking place on Thursday, September 15th, at Norwood High School, in the cafeteria at 2020 Sherman Avenue. The meeting will be 6:00 to 7:30. All residents who experienced water damage to their home are strongly encouraged to attend this meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Hanahan. Is there any other new business? We'll move on to communications. The first is a letter from the Planning Commission regarding a public hearing request for 1720 Lincoln Avenue.
To City Council, on July 6, 2016, the Norwood Planning Commission held a public hearing for the owner, Fred Webkin, for the proposed zone change from R2 residential 1 and 2 family to NBD PUD Neighborhood Business District and Planned Unit Development. The Planning Commission listened to the applicant and unanimously voted to not recommend the zone change, since it would allow a variety of uses to be established, which would not be in the best interest of the neighborhood. It was also noted that Mr. Webkin acknowledged that he purchased the property without first meeting with the building department and doing his due diligence. Per Section 1117.10 of the Norwood Zoning Code, upon receipt of the recommendations of the Planning Commission, the Norwood City Council shall schedule a public hearing and final action.
This does require a 30-day notice, so... Mr. Mupper.
I move a receive and file a letter and schedule a public hearing for...
I would like to schedule it October 13th is 30 days, which is after our next two weeks, after two meetings from now, so I think we probably need to do it on October the 25th. That would give you about 10 days to get notices out. So I'd like to schedule for October 25th. That's part of your motion?
That's fine, yes.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mrs. Hanahan. Is there any discussion? So the motion on the floor is to receive and file the letter and set the date of the public hearing for October 25th. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mupper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Next is a letter from Mayor Williams regarding request executive session to discuss contracts.
Dear Madam President and members of council, I am requesting that council go into executive session on Tuesday, September 13th, 2016, to discuss contracts. If you have any questions regarding this matter, please do not hesitate to contact me. Sincerely, Thomas F. Williams, Mayor, City of Norwood.
Mr. Mupper.
I move a receive and file a letter and go into executive session to discuss contracts.
Seconded by Mr. Blair. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mupper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We'll now move into executive session. We will... We have to ask everyone who's in attendance to leave in, except for Mr. Gears, who has information for us. We will be reconvening the meeting following the executive session. The only two items remaining on the agenda will be the monthly earnings tax report and the court fines, but we will readjourn to deal with those two matters prior to adjournment.